For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting on May 20th, 2019. Call the order, please.
Hoss.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Noack.
Here.
And Walgora.
Here.
Please rise to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, modifications to the agenda this evening. We have one request of a proclamation for the EMS.
I move we add proclamation for EMS.
Second. Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walgora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Any other modifications to the agenda? Any issues with the minutes of regular session, May 6th, 2019? Changes? Pardon me. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address. I will point out that if your topic is the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate for the Senior Living Center, please wait for that to come up on the agenda and also discussion on medical marijuana facilities and the first reading of the smoking ban.
And the budget.
And the budget. So, anything outside of an agenda item, we'll just address and I will ask you at that time to come up for comment. Anyone with anything outside of those topics on the agenda? Mike.
Good evening. Mike Kalasowski, 7066 Combe Road, your assistant building official. Well, as sure as everybody knows, the good news is, is we're back down in our offices. We're not 100% put back together, but we're well on our way and back functioning. We were thinking about having a grand opening with refreshments, but we can't afford them. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, the consent agenda this evening is, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $368,336.82 via a noise ordinance variance on June 15th, 2019, 10:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and permission to block East Lake Street from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. for Chief Sparring Grill located at 626 North Second Avenue. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
And Hoss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And we'll move down to the proclamation. This is for EMS Week. To designate the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a valid, is a vital public safety function, and whereas President Gerald R. Ford first authorized EMS Week in 1974 to celebrate important work of EMS and the American College of Emergency Physicians has coordinated recognition activities over the ensuing 45 years. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, Alpena is served by a full-time advanced life support fire slash EMS department, and the surrounding communities are each served by combination or volunteer medical first responders or EMTs backed by our city-county paramedic ambulances. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of trained members of the public emergency medical dispatchers like those at Alpena County 911, firefighters, first responders, police officers, educators, administrators, EMTs, paramedics, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and other healthcare professionals. And whereas, the first responders undergo 70 hours of training, EMTs 250, and paramedics almost 1,600 hours of education to enable them to help the community and enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walgora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Alpena, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And we have quite a few of our EMS firefighter team and our chief here as well.
Andy, Mayor? Come on up, guys. When I be down there? Sure as begin.
So many of them, I think they're black.
Go, can't get in the photo.
Say, "Police."
All right. Perfect. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, next up is a public hearing for the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate for the Besser Senior Living Community located at 325 Johnson Street. I'll open the public hearing with a report from Adam Paul.
Good evening. Public hearing was held on March 18th, 2019, at the City Council meeting. A resolution, 2019-05 unanimously approved establishing a commercial rehabilitation district at 325 Johnson. Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate has been filed for a two-year abatement on the new taxes generated for the property. In order to fulfill the requirements of Public Act 210 of 2005, a public hearing must be held and council must authorize Resolution 2019-09 to approve the CRA exemption certificate. On March 28th, 2019, the Alpena County Commission approved the creation of the Commercial Rehabilitation District. And then again, this development of a 48-unit assisted living facility, and they're asking for a two-year abatement to offset some storms that were caused that were incurred to move a significant amount. So I can answer any questions you may have. I would note that the resolution in front of you does have one change on page three under G. We did make sure the correct entity was listed, so that it now should say Besser Senior Living Community. So other than that, I'll be more happy to answer any questions.
All right. If you want to stand by for a moment, I will open this topic up for public comment. And seeing no one, any written comments to the city clerk?
None.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and council discussion. Anybody have questions for Adam or anyone else? We pretty much went over this before.
We did, yeah. So, no questions.
Thank you, Adam.
So I move and we adopt Resolution 2019-09.
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the city budget. I'll open the public hearing with a report from the city clerk, treasurer, finance director, and city manager.
The preliminary budget for 2019-20 was presented to council on May 6th. The only change to the preliminary budget was the addition of the bridge insurance, which is later on the agenda. The amount of $44,100 was added to state grants trunk line. An expenditure for the same amount was added to material contract for bridges. This change had zero net effect to the anticipated deficit for fiscal year 1920. Regarding the fringe benefits and the street funds discussed at the last council meeting, we did not have enough time to dedicate to a further analysis. It was decided to proceed with the preliminary budget as proposed and investigate further in the next few months. Budget amendments will be made the next fiscal year if needed. The water and sewer rates as proposed by the city engineer reflected 2.9% increase from the current fiscal year. The city operating mileage to be levied for tax year 2019 will be 16.1066. Also to be levied are .645 mils for dioride operations and 1.9858 mils for the DDA number five. Those are all the same as last year. That's pretty much it on that. Greg, did you have anything?
No. I think I made my comments last meeting and nothing's changed.
Thank you both very much. I will open to public comment for anyone that would like to publicly comment on the proposed budget for the 2019-20 year. Any written comments received in the clerk's office?
No.
Thank you. Close the public hearing, open it up to council discussion. Only questions I had were last meeting. I didn't find anything since.
Yep. No, sir. Been back through it this weekend. I have no questions.
Okay.
I do.
If that's the case, there are several listed resolutions that we will approve one at a time, if you will.
The first one is, I move we approve the budget resolution for 2019-2020.
Second. Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move we approve Resolution 2019-08.
It's a little odd because it says about fiscal year 2019-30. But the resolution number is 2019-08, you're correct.
Yeah, it's fiscal year 1920.
We have got much to last us for the next 10 years.
So this is my motion.
We have tight budget.
Yes.
Did I hear a second?
I did not.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Walgora?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noack?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Let's see, was there one more? Yeah, two more.
How do we approve the amended fiscal year city budget?
Yeah, so this would be 18, 19?
18, 19.
Yeah. Just to finish it out.
Yep.
Second. Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walgora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And last one, at least, I move we adopt the city water sewer rate for 2019-20.
Second. Susan?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walgora?
Aye.
And Hoss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank your office for all the work. We will now skip down to unfinished business. A is discussion of medical marijuana facilities and public input session oral presentation by planning with the development director, Adam Paul.
Good evening, once again. We've talked about this at length, so I'll just hit a few highlights. That's certainly available for any questions as well. But just to go over what we're looking at today, the use of marijuana has been decriminalized recreationally and medically. So that's not something we can change or have the option to even look at. Right now, the City of Alpena has opted out of recreational facilities. And once again, I think that the laws need to be very much closer looked at before we, in my opinion, we should be opting in just to make sure that they have all their ducks in a row to make the actual law work. So right now, we've opted out. Today, we're talking about medical facilities, and they do require that municipality opt-in to allow any type of medical recreational facility. So that would take affirmative action, although if it's something the city would like, we would definitely make sure we'd want to prepare the appropriate documentation before we, any opt-in actions would be taken. That being said, one thing that hasn't occurred that is a little different is the DDA did address this topic at their last meeting regarding specifically provisioning centers. They did take a vote, 6-5, to allow, potentially allow provisioning centers. And that is the direction that council wanted to take a closer look at. So I will be more than happy to answer any more additional questions you may have. But one other refresher, medical marijuana, there is no tax on medical marijuana. There is, you know, there certainly would be up to $5,000 application fee for any potential applicant, and there would be obviously some potential economic development, just like any other new businesses in the city. So I will leave it at that as far as my report goes, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or just let any public.
Thank you, Adam. At this time, before the council starts a discussion, I will take any public comment on this topic. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
And I have a copy of, what I'm going to read to you, that I'll give to each of the council members after I present the sign. Chairman Kowski, I own the large building directly behind you, the Memorial Hall formerly known as the Army National Guard Building. And for the benefit of context, beyond owning just the National Guard Armory, I also own the laser tag business inside the building. I currently serve as CEO of Michigan Unmanned Aerial Systems Consortium. I have taught in the business program at Northwood University as an adjunct professor, and I'm retired from the Air Force, for those of you who don't know my background. My general sense is marijuana industry will not have a positive effect on our community or the state. Drug use, including marijuana, has an adverse effect on individuals and our businesses alike. Steps to facilitate or promote the use of marijuana will not, in my opinion, serve the best interest of this community. Many employers, especially federal and state, have standing prohibitions against the use of marijuana, in many cases making individuals either unemployable or subject to dismissal if drug use is detected. Communities exercising discretion to allow retail operations in their jurisdiction become less attractive for businesses to locate or expand. This factor becomes more important as job markets continue to tighten. Alpena already struggles with having enough qualified applicants for many types of jobs. Ask companies like our local Walmart about the challenges they face in hiring staff. People in the medical marijuana industry are now openly talking about the limited medical value of marijuana use. Some industry insiders are now admitting much of their effort was to find ways to legally sell cannabis under the guise of medical use to meet the demand for recreational use. In fact, some promoters have stated medical marijuana legislation was a step to help lower the resistance to the same for recreational marijuana, a plan that appears to be experiencing some success. As the owner of a recreational business in Alpena, marijuana use poses a significant problem, and expanding marijuana use poses even greater risk for my business. Our company has long prohibited and denied service to people under the influence of drugs or alcohol. Our players must have use of all their available senses and agility. Anything less is a formula for somebody getting injured. Marijuana is much harder for us to detect than alcohol, forcing us to confront behavior based upon suspected use of cognitive-altering substances. Also, having a business near us selling alcohol or marijuana will make our business less attractive to parents leaving children with us for the games, as many do. We have many families and groups that come from all across the state and even beyond to participate. The image of downtown in the City of Alpena is particularly important and part of their decision process. We are very much opposed to the establishment of medical marijuana, medical or recreational marijuana retail outlets in the city, particularly downtown. All business is not necessarily good business. I offer that respectfully to each of you.
Close the public comment and open it up for council discussion is basically what it is tonight, is a discussion. And I would assume at some point we would need to let staff know whether they should move ahead with all the zoning issues that Adam Paul talked about, or whether we will not. So, I can open it up, I guess, with a little bit of discussion myself. We've talked about a lot of this stuff before, as far as the, as far as what, we'll start with what the people say. So the people of our region voted in favor of medical marijuana facilities many years ago. The DDA put out their, put out their survey, and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong, but over 60% of the DDA respondents voted in favor of medical marijuana facilities in the DDA with limitations. So there was one that said just yes, and then there was one that said yes with limitations, and combining those both were over 60% of the respondents. And then the board was obviously pretty tight, 6 to 5 as a DDA board as a whole. So, I don't have an issue with medical marijuana facilities in the City of Alpena. I've stated that before, and I still have had nothing that convinces me otherwise. I completely understand Jim's comments, and those comments are shared by several people. Medical marijuana industry, I think, is slightly different than recreational marijuana, and I've been convinced that it's useful for those who are using it.
I'm kind of the swing vote on this. For me, it was never an issue of whether it should be allowed or shouldn't be allowed. It was an issue as, did it fit? Could we fit it into the city? What facilities fit where? It's legal. It's not my place to tell people what to do or how to do it, no more than I would tell people if they can drink or not drink. It's none of my business. We did have planning commission go, and they came back and they presented their findings, and we do, it does fit within the city. Certain things fit in certain places. So, that being said, it would be if I had to vote my direction to direct staff to continue
I disagree. I could say everything that Jim said and say it louder and a lot less, a lot slower, so that everybody understood very clearly every word. I finally went to medical professionals and said, "Please tell me, what is there about it that is not already accessible for anybody who is ill or has any of the other symptoms that they feel need to be treated that way?" And every medical professional I talked with said, "There is, there is something. It is not necessary. It is not the only thing." And after hearing that over and over and over, I am convinced that the damage it causes to youth, to some people who maybe misuse it, maybe don't misuse it, maybe just have adverse reactions, it is not our place to introduce that. It is, it is in my mind, my conscience would not let me say yes. And that's what I truly believe.
So, over the last several weeks, a few weeks ago, I made comments that said, you know, I'm not in favor of a facility at all, either medical or recreational, you know? And I'm glad I did, because what it did is it spurred a lot of conversation and a lot of people approaching me on what they want in their city and what they feel is allowed. I've had great conversations with people that currently use and how effective it is in relieving some of the pain. I do have an issue, obviously, with how cards are, you know, gotten, I guess you can say with the word, but that's not the issue. So, the majority of the people I talk to, and as you know, I've always strived over the last seven years to be a strong representative for the City of Alpena, you have to go in at times in issues like this to be a representative of the people. And overwhelmingly, almost two to one, people are in favor of a medical marijuana facility in the city. And being their representative, you know, I feel that while I agree with some of those things that Susan said on a personal basis, that, you know, at times you have to represent the people in what they want you to do. So it is my findings that they're in favor of this, a very close majority, in some regards are, you know, they're worried about some things, but at the same time, I think there's enough that people understand there are some medical benefits that they see and that they, it does help them. So, with that being said, then, you know, I'm the one that basically said a few weeks ago, but after all of my research and discussions with a lot of different people and polling, I am in favor as a representative of the people of Alpena.
My thoughts are in line with Mayor and Cindy. And as far as the basis shows, a legal substance, especially in the medicinal use, it's been shown that it has helped people, and I feel that we shouldn't, there shouldn't be prohibited from access to that in our community and have to travel outside of our community to be able to get that medicine. And the citizens in the City of Alpena, you know, more recently voted for it as a majority on top of the state many years ago. And looking at the DDA's poll as far as both business owners and building owners, there was a majority for it, as well as majority of the DDA board. So I don't necessarily think we necessarily should even limit it, that being an option for provisioning centers. As Cindy mentioned, other types of licensing, there are other spaces in the city for growing or, you know, outside of the business district. Those are my thoughts, though, and for moving forward on it.
Those are my thoughts. I think the big thing, though, for myself, though personally too, is that, you know, I'm not going to stop the fight of getting marijuana approved for medical purposes at the federal level, because I still personally believe this is a, this is a drug that should be prescribed by a doctor and issued by a pharmacy. That's my own personal thoughts. I think I've already reflected what people want me to do.
All right. I will ask either Adam or Greg, as it sounds like we're as a, as a whole looking to move forward, what would you, what are your next?
I guess what I would, Adam, jump in with anything, one is, there are five facilities, correct, that are allowed under the law. The planning commission, it suggested, I think, two of each.
Correct.
Is that what you want to do, or do you want to exclude some or increase numbers of some, so that one, as we prepare, because the job within me, Adam, to work with Bill and the planning commission to make modifications to the zoning ordinance that we would need. And then for Bill and Adam to work on our code of ordinances where that would have to be modified. And one thing that came out with a, and I think Adam mentioned it last meeting, or two meetings ago when we last discussed this, was through the DEQ that they strongly recommended that before you implement any program is that you put in place a strong odor control ordinance, which we would probably have to look at primarily other states, Colorado, I think Nevada was another one that was mentioned in the webinar, states that have implemented or communities within those states, because that becomes a major issue. And to prepare those documents and then have them go through the zoning, has to go through the usual public hearing at the planning commission level, and then brought here, the code of ordinances will be brought here for two readings. the code of ordinances will be brought here for two readings, as would zoning changes. We bring them all together, along with, I think we need to also prepare what the process will be, what the fee schedule, how that will work out, and the process, any forms that we're going to need, and that we bring you a complete package. That is then voted on, and when that is approved, with any changes you may like along the way, then you actually vote to opt in, once that's done, because then we are, have everything in place and ready to go. Anything else I missed?
I think you got it all.
Okay. So that's what we were looking at.
Realistically, timeframe wise, I can do it.
Yeah, I don't know.
That, I will try and get it in front of the planning commission, I'm not sure they can be, are going to be able to take action on everything this coming meeting, I'll certainly do my best to do that, but getting a notice though, probably going to be July, July planning commission meeting, and then they'll hopefully approve the zoning ordinance language, and that will come to you, and during that time, we'll, I'll be working with Bill with code ordinances, as well as fee schedules, so.
And the forms and everything else, and then we'll go forward from that.
And it would be my opinion that I would, I would be fine with the planning commission, zoning boards' suggestions as far as locations. I don't, of the five, of the five options, I don't see, or I do see, a place for each somewhere in the city of Alpena, in my opinion, including Grow, if they're, you know, if you're looking at the property we have out at 23, somewhere appropriate like that, we do have some rural-ish areas that probably wouldn't be bothering anybody. I would suggest a minimum of two of each, for, for the sake of competition and allowance, and possibly three provisioning centers in the city, two limited in the DDA. No more than two in the DDA, which is basically what their, their suggestion was, but perhaps three in the entire city. That's just my suggestion.
At this point, there are a number of protected uses that the planning commission recommended. Are we going to go with the recommendations at this point? Because if it does change, I believe it does take, if Collins passes something differently from planning commission, is there a supermajority required, or does that benefit?
I don't, I don't remember what the state law, the Enabling Act actually says. Yeah, because that was going to be my other question, because I didn't think they asked this, you know, the DDA, and I will, I guess I'll state, because I voted on the DDA, and what I read in the paper where it said that the DDA voted to allow two in the downtown, or in the DDA district. If I remember the motion, there was a lot of, it went back and forth of what the motion was going to be. And when it was finally made, because I commented, it was Jeff, was it Minda, who made the motion, I said, that was a clever way you did that, because what he ultimately did is he said, I believe, and we haven't verified this, was that, make a motion that the DDA concur with the planning commission to allow the two provisioning centers within the city. They didn't even mention, he didn't, in that last motion, the DDA. So it was kind of like, yeah, that could include the DDA, and they could be both there, but that's, that's what I thought was the motion. So I have not had that verified, I could have been totally wrong on there, but, but it is important for you now to direct, to say how many, if it's what the mayor said, to allow two in the DDA, or the CBD, whichever, you know, what, within those boundaries, that's fine, but, so that that gives direction to the planning commission for how they do that, or how they come up with their final language. Because the one thing is, is once you set a number, you can always change, if you say we're going to do two now, citywide, you know, in six months, a year, you see how things are going, you know, there's a need for another one of these, they're working well, we're going to add one or two more of a specific use, that can always be done. That's a simple amendment. I'm not sure if it's actually zoning, where that will be, or in the code of ordinances that they'll have to work out, but it's an easy fix. I mean, there can always be amendment. It's not, once it's done, it, it's fixed.
And that's a good point, that's, that's fine. I guess I'm, if the DDA board wants to, wants to continue to determine what Jeff meant by his motion, I mean, that's, that's fine.
At this point, I would figure what they've said is two, if they're allowing, they would recommend up to two.
And before I break, planning commission, I'll check with Aaron and get minutes from that, just to see what exactly was done. So we'll get to boundaries.
Yeah, it's, in the end, it's still true.
In the end, it's still true. I was just suggesting a third, just, just because the community seems big enough for three. But that's just my opinion.
I know, looking at specifically liquor law license, it's one for every 3,000 people for sale, sales, not restaurants, and that would be in line with that, too, somewhere. To have three rather than two.
And maybe I'd take a different path, because I would rather stay with two, and then get those rolling, if there's a need for a third added, because you can't go back.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, too.
And then the two could be anywhere in the city, including the DDA.
Yep. I think that was the planning commission's recommendation, too, was two.
And that was based off language from, actually, the recommendation from, I think it was Grow, it was pro-medical marijuana organization.
And I have an issue, not an issue, and I've talked to Adam about this before, about the odor control ordinance. The odor control ordinance, will that be just for marijuana, or does that, is odor control ordinance, is that for any odor in the city?
I would assume it would be universal.
And how do you control that?
I don't know, because I haven't looked at any ordinances, but this has been something the DDA, or DEQ, or whatever they're called now, has strongly suggested, they gave examples, I haven't had a chance to look at them, I assume Adam and Bill will be doing that, and we'll see how workable they are. I mean, it'll come back to you, you'll be able to look at them, and either say, yeah, they're good, or you'll suggest changes, or criticize, you know, say, we don't want them at all, because we don't like what it is.
I'm assuming anything that exists is exempt. Is that true? If you were to put in an odor control ordinance, if there's something that already has an odor that's been here as exempt?
That I don't know, that would be.
Because how can you suddenly say, you smell, and now it's a problem?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to try to answer that, I'll leave that to Bill. That's what he, that's why he's the attorney.
And I'm sure everybody's mind's going completely, probably almost immediately to DPI, but when you, you walk past fast food restaurant, all you smell for several hours a day is that, so, you know, maybe come up with something that's continuous. I, I'll leave that to you.
And that's where we're going to have to look at what is working well in other communities and other states. So we'll, we'll come to you with something, and you can tell us if you like it, it will probably be a standalone ordinance opposed to the ordinance allowing for provisioning centers, or all the facilities, and the zoning ordinance, so.
Okay.
So that one, maybe we could, we could later and bring it back again, so.
Let's do that.
And part of that isn't even the law, and the rules, basically, talk about odor, that it cannot, you know, be a, I don't know if it's, they call it a nuisance or whatever, you know, be on the property line, things like that, so, again, those are always tough, just like noise ordinances are difficult. So it's a matter of, let's see what others have done, whether maybe they've come up with some reasonable language that works or not, don't know.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Require a vote?
Yeah, I would probably ask for a vote to direct staff to then begin to prepare the ordinances and the other documents.
So moved.
Nielsen?
No.
Noah?
Yes.
Walguar?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up is the first reading of ordinance 19-444, which is the smoking ban in public parks.
This is ordinance number 19-444. It's an ordinance of the city of Alpena, Michigan, amending chapter 58, parks, recreation, and city property, specifically article three, use of parks. Be ordained by the municipal council of the city of Alpena, state of Michigan, as follows, chapter 58, article, I'm going to have to double check that, I may have, I think it is article two, but I'll have to double check. Article two, use of parks, recreational facilities, and city property, section 5862, which is a section that currently prohibits.
I'm going to say it right there.
Yeah, yeah, it says two and three. It's hereby amended to add subparagraph 13 as follows, okay? So it would be unlawful for any person using the city parks or beaches, too, and 13 would be the added one, which would say smoking of tobacco, excluding vaping and smokeless, except as noted below, and the exceptions are, A, two designated posted areas at the city of Marina, that have not been established yet, but I think that were talked about, and then city, or second, excuse me, at the Woodward Avenue trailhead, a person who violates this subparagraph is responsible for a municipal civil infraction, shall be subject to a civil fine of not more than $50 for the first infraction, $100 for the second infraction, and $200 for each subsequent infraction. And the effective date to provisions of this ordinance shall take effect, excuse me, immediately after being adopted by the municipal council, and shall be duly published within 10 days of adoption.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Before we start discussion here, I'll ask if anyone has any public comment on this topic, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I don't smoke, but I'm going to play devil's advocate for a minute. You expect everybody to come to Alpena, come to our events, come to Brown Trout, come down to Brown Trout and participate in all the things, but you can't smoke, and it's $50 if I come and find you, and $100 the second time if you come the second night and smoke again. So think about that when you're down there for 4th of July, and you're at the beaches, and you're at the parks, and all the events that you hope you'll bring people into Alpena for. So I don't smoke, I'm not bothered if someone is smoking near me, but I think that you need to think about the big picture, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Anyone else?
You have.
I have, we have some written public comment. I will read the one from Joshua Myers, M.D., the medical director over at the health department.
Myers.
What?
Myers.
Oh, what did I say?
Myers.
Garden cones.
And, and then Cindy has one from, from someone else. So this is dated May 13, 2019, Dear Mayor and Alpena City Council members, I'm writing in support of the proposed ordinance to ban smoking in public parks and beaches, but ask that you consider making them tobacco-free and include electronic nicotine delivery systems such as e-cigarettes. Tobacco use remains a leading cause of preventable disease and premature death in the United States. Every year, more than 16,200 Michiganders die from tobacco use, and every year, 10,300 Michigan children become new, regular, daily smokers, and one-third of them will die prematurely due to this addiction. Although smoking rates have declined, tobacco use remains one of the most important public health issues we face. End of concern now, adolescent vaping or use of e-cigarettes has become epidemic in northern Michigan, with over 20% of high school students reporting current use. Vaping is now, pardon me, vaping, as it is now commonly referred to, is unfortunately popular among adolescents and young adults. Secondhand vapor has been found to contain many chemicals, including respiratory irritants and known carcinogens, that can pose a risk to those exposed, especially children with asthma and other health conditions. Furthermore, the cartridges used in these products are often found discarded in public spaces, and like cigarette butts, pose health risks to childrens and pets, as well as being a litter issue, as vaping is now heavily marketed to our youth and a common way that children face a lifetime of addiction to nicotine. I believe it is also crucial to reduce the normalization of these products by banning them in our public spaces. Certainly enforcement will be much easier as well if e-cigarettes are included in your ordinance. It will be confusing to the public as well as to staff if vaping is allowed and smoking is not. As a pediatrician and public health physician, I encourage you to help protect the health of our children and the 80% of adults who do not smoke by making your parks and beaches tobacco-free. I wanted to add one issue to consider when enacting smoke-free parks, as that is legalization of marijuana. With the recent changes to our state law, we will see more public use of marijuana, and already have seen smelled an increase in usage when simply walking down the street in some of areas of Michigan, as well as across the country. Although we may not be in Ann Arbor, I have seen it in my hometown here in northern Michigan, many people use the same vaping electronic devices to inhale marijuana as they do tobacco products. In fact, there is now a device that holds two cartridges, so that an individual can alternate between the two products with the same device. I believe if vaping is allowed in our parks, there will be marijuana use as well, and enforcement will be much more difficult if you do not allow any vaping in these areas. Marijuana use may not be illegal, but I am sure if you want people using parks, beaches, and playgrounds versus in the privacy of their own residents. Sincerely, Joshua Myersen, M.D., PH, M.P.H.
Okay, and this was forwarded to us from the mayor, and it's an excerpt from Jody Radke for the campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. So she says, again, I would caution a partial ban, as it becomes challenging to enforce, difficult for compliance, as it creates confusion, and we're learning a lot in Colorado, being the first to implement legalization of recreational marijuana. These devices are used to vape both nicotine and MJ, and the trajectory of the industry is headed, where the, this industry is headed should raise significant concerns. The other headline we're beginning to see is vaping litter, similar to combustibles, Juul pods, and others, becoming a real problem. It's better than, that these ordinance include all products to eliminate confusion, communicate to visitors and residents, that you prioritize public health in places that promote healthy activity and prevent a problem in advance, and of, in advance of inadvertently creating one.
And to my knowledge, there was no other comments written for it.
No.
Just, just briefly to address Angie's concerns the best I can, is that my perspective from reading the lists and lists of Alpena, or Alpena, of Michigan communities that are doing this, if that were the case, that nobody wanted to visit here because they couldn't smoke on the parks and beaches, then they probably won't be coming to northern Michigan at all. I think we're probably behind the curve as far as Petoskey, Harbor Springs, Blaine, and several other communities.
Traverse City.
Traverse City. And so it's, I don't really think it's too much of a concern that we're going to have issues with our tourism or people visiting. I'll pose again my simple issue, for the most part, I understand the health issue, and that's health department concerns. My biggest issue is the, is the litter. This is insane. So I think this is the first step, again, in trying to control the litter. I don't know too much about vape pods and jouls being left behind, but if that's going to be an issue, and you guys want to add that, along with the concerns from the doctor and Ms. Radke, I've, I've been fine with that all along, doesn't really matter to me either way. So we can revise that now before Bill does his second reading, or we can leave it as it is? You guys got any comment on that?
Well, and I, I was for, I think the beginning, and we talked last time, we're also prohibiting vaping devices, in addition to some of the reasons they added that, you don't know what's in it, and sometimes the discharge from it can be small, and other times I've seen it be like voluminous smoke, in that you're still sitting next to that. So for my reason, it does bother people around you. And then there's also the litter concern, other forms of litter, if they can have their cigarettes, or switch to Juul pods and these things, and then it's a new litter concern. So I would prefer that they include it. I said that before, we compromised in the start, thought it'd be better at least to smokeless, or smoking things, but I think the vaping devices, I think I would show best if there was also included, that's my thought. My thought.
I agree.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with, uh, Councilman Hess as well. You know, I'm, I'm fine with including that into that ordinance and having that banned from the parks as well, just to get a little bit ahead of it. Some of that is, is that, you know, we have this, we have a police officer in the park, he doesn't have to determine, is that a baked cloud or is that a smoked cloud or anything like that. It's a little bit easier for them. So I think that, you know, myself, we can include that. As far as smoking in the parks, you know, I saw a lot of smokers and I've gotten, I know a lot of people that smoke. And what surprised me is they were the people that were in favor of us. You know, they weren't bothered by smoking being banned in a public park at all. They said the same thing too, we can find other places to park or to smoke and so on. So we don't need to be smoking in parks and so on. So that was a big influence for myself.
I think we should all be mindful and aware of the fact that your rights stop where mine began. And if I'm gonna have that blown in my face and in my grandchildren's face, even in my dog's breathing space, where it is legal for me to take him, then you have no right. Other citizens have no right to expose me to something that is flagrantly and been proven to cause my health to gradually decline. I have never spoken with a doctor who encouraged me to smoke, never. I have never said, you could take this medication if you, he has never, no doctor's ever said, you could take this medication if you would figure out how to vape. I have never heard anybody with any, um, value placed on old-fashioned consideration of other people and good health and being a good role model for children, especially younger children. I've never heard any of them say, it's a good thing if we smoke and let it blow it in their faces. So I, I cannot understand. I just cannot wrap my head around the fact that all of a sudden, you believe the majority of citizens in this city think this is a good thing for Alpena. I, it makes no sense to me at all.
Cindy?
Do you want a motion to include that?
Do, do you guys feel that you, is that where the waves are running?
Yeah, I'm in favor as well, actually having that taken in.
Do you need a motion or just direction?
You wanted to say?
Well, or I can amend it and bring it back next time for first reading again. Or if you, if specifically you just wanted to say smoking of tobacco in any form, including vaping, uh, then we could just make that change and bring it back for approval at the next meeting.
Let's do that. We're gonna be hit in summer and we probably wanna get this. I don't, if you don't think that's a big enough change.
It's, it's not, but the only other thing was, um, I think we did speak about chewing tobacco last time. And there seemed to be a consensus that it would not include chewing tobacco, but if that's, I just wanna make sure that's still the consensus.
Sometimes I'm picking that out still. It doesn't affect me or people around. And it's, I, I sometimes, maybe it also, it's real.
I'm not trying to create an issue.
You know, it's.
You're trying to clarify your direction.
I don't think any one of us are gonna know if somebody is. I guess that's my take, or if you wanna make, I mean, if it, if it. I don't know how to phrase myself here, but if.
Totally.
If it's, if it's better for the health department community that we just ban tobacco products, including smoking and vaping, or, uh, it's, it's, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I do have, I have one question though. And it is in regard to events like the, like at the Brown Trout Festival where they'll be putting up a tent where they normally have a smoking corral. Will they be still, will those people have to go out into the other areas that we've designated? Or are we gonna be able to allow for a variance for an event to?
Just, just like we do noise.
Any other variants, okay. You might have said that at the last meeting.
There's no reason we shouldn't be able to do that. If they already have their own designated smoking area, then we can incorporate that.
And just, yeah, as long as they clean.
For the event.
Okay. Good?
Okay, I'll make the change and bring it back.
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you. All right. New business is a bid for Bayview Park Van Shell Sound System Replacement. Steve Schultz is here.
Richard, remember Kate. Food tomorrow.
I'm not rich, I don't know if that's good or bad.
That's good.
Let you guys decide. Voice of opinions, go.
He wants it on record.
On, on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, the city reviewed, received and opened bids for the two thousand nineteen Bayview Park Van Shell Sound System Replacement. Professional services are sought to design, supply and install sound system and all its components. The vendor will also provide manuals as well as ASBOT schematics and operational training with new system for staff. Bid documents were sent to six firms and also posted on the city website with one bid received and an email declining the bid as listed in the message. Uh, in a follow-up to the owner of GT Sounds, the low bidder, the only bidder, Tim LaFlesh stipulated that the shipping costs are anticipated to be around $300. And funding in the amount of $35,000 has been established in the Parks and Rec Fund for this project. And the bid received is well below that budgeted amount. It is a recommendation the city engineer that the project be awarded to GT Sounds for the as-bid unit prices, which are attached, totaling $18,849.51, with a shipping cost not to exceed $500.
I was just gonna make the quick comment, it's like, this is finally something I haven't really experienced. And so I used to be a DJ years ago and I have some, some, you know, equipment background. Kinda looked through this whole thing and honestly, it's, it's my opinion that, uh, I've heard GT Sounds, they do a great job. He's got, you know, the recommendations that he gave and the price that we're giving on this is fantastic. You know, so I guess the only question I had is, um, just curiosity, and Steve, I'm not sure if you can answer this. How old was that last system? Was it, was it the original that was built, the Van Shell?
I couldn't find anything indicating that we had purchased anything in the interim. The Van Shell went in, I believe, in the late eighties. I found a sound plan today, but there wasn't a year on them. So I don't think it was an official sound plan, but it was that, that late eightier, I believe, so.
Yeah, and the quality of the components that are being purchased, you know, they're not cheap components. These are, these are quality components.
Tim does the majority of sound down there, so I'm sure he knows what he wants to work with first to a certain extent.
And if water, if approval is done prior to May twenty-first, which would be today, he would be able to do it probably in June and instead of waiting for later in August.
Right, correct. Yeah, we stipulated that in the, in the specifications and asked them to comment on that. He didn't say that, he commented on that in that part of it. So yeah, that would be good to have that done and complete this year and then we're good.
Excellent. Yeah, I don't, it seemed like a typo in his email. It said, if GT Sounds are approved for the project, my tentative schedule would be to start the second week of August. If approved prior to May twenty-first, the project could be completed by late June.
Right, so it, it, if we, if we're going with his schedule, the way he wanted to do it, he probably would've started into August. But he's basically just saying that, you know.
Oh.
Move some things around and do what he can and get insurance done.
Threw me off, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
That's if we let him know ahead. And I think it had a lot to do with being able to order the materials, give it off time.
Okay. Create a motion on that one unless there's further discussion.
Yeah. Uh, I move we include the cost of the new sound system for Van Shell, GT Sounds, where they have a as-bid price of $18,849.51. And shipping not to exceed $500.
Second. Noah?
Yes.
Walgura?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Next up is a bid for insurance coverage on the Second Avenue Bridge.
I apologize for not giving all the backup detail on the, on the quote from, um, Alpena Agency. At the December seventeenth, two thousand eighteen meeting, the council voted to accept a proposal from Lappin Agency for property and liability insurance. As part of the request for proposal, I requested coverage for the Second Avenue Bridge to be included. If you recall, Lappin Agency did not have enough time to provide a quote. I had received a quote from Alpena Agency on July eleventh, two thousand eighteen, while the city was still insured with Alpena Agency. At that time, we didn't go ahead with the quote because we were waiting to sort things out with the Michigan Department of Transportation to find out if the city would get reimbursed for insurance. MDOT did approve the reimbursement at $44,100, but we still wanted a second quote. Lappin Agency was finally able to provide a quote in March two thousand nineteen for $81,842. Mr. Steve Lappin decided to check with another company since the premium was quite high. We have not received another quote from Lappin Agency and the decision was made to move forward with Alpena Agency. Mr. Steve Wilson of Alpena Agency provided an updated quote dated May sixth, two thousand nineteen, and the premium remained the same as the July two thousand eighteen quote of $44,100. It is my recommendation to accept the proposal for insurance on the Second Avenue Bridge for $44,100 from Alpena Agency. This amount will be fully reimbursed by MDOT. Um, excuse me. Some of the things that are not included are flood, earthquake and mechanical breakdown. I did, I know there, it's a lot to read and I apologize for not giving that out ahead of time. It is, it is valued at, the replacement cost of the bridge is $31,500,000. And we are used, we are using an actual cash value limit of $25,200,000, which is basically eighty percent of the replacement cost. So I added it to the budget, as you heard earlier, the change. We do expect full reimbursement from MDOT. And so it shouldn't be in it, it will be no cost to the city. There is a $50,000 deductible should anything happen.
The fashion of an alien spacecraft is covered.
That's covered, yeah.
That's covered.
Before the gears break.
Yeah, then you're on your own, but if it's, yeah, the other, it's.
Yeah, you're comfortable with the coverage, huh?
It's probably the best we're going to get. Yeah, and there's nothing now. And it is, like I said, fully covered by MDOT, but it at least provides coverage. If something major happened, Lady Michigan runs into it, something else.
Concerns we're having, vehicles and ships.
Yes.
Well, they, they should have their own insurance, but obviously it's not gonna be enough to cover a bridge.
Right, so at least, yeah. So we have the additional, if there was, you know, significant damage or some, I can't even think what else could happen, but, uh, if it did, I guess if the thing just simply the, the two armed, you know, they just collapsed down into the river, one of them did, that would be covered as a collapse. So it covers, you know, a lot of the, anything catastrophic.
Hopefully that won't happen.
No, hopefully not, at least not when there's anything on it or anything under it. But I think it covers the catastrophic, which is really what you're looking for.
Rich had made a comment that it is very structurally sound and he said a boat would probably just bounce off of it. Um, Alpena Agency does also insure the Ninth Avenue Bridge. That one's only $5,000 a year and we pay for that. No reimbursement on that.
And how would we approve the, uh, the transfer of the bridge in the amount of $44,000?
Second. Walgura?
Aye.
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And will we adjourn closed session to discuss the issue?
Hoss?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Walgura?
Aye.